Notice of the public hearing Town Council, Town of Watertown, August 30th, 2022. The Town Council of the Town of Watertown will hold public hearings at the Watertown Town Hall, 61 Echo Lake Road in Watertown, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, at time and purpose indicated below. At 7:30 PM to hear comments on the proposed ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $11 million for various school capital improvements and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes, or notes, and temporary notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation. Is it Luigi, or who's speaking on the school's behalf? Both. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Great, so just as our presentation is getting put up onto the screen, we would also like to just say thank you to the Town Council. We know that you've had three public hearings, including us this evening, and just as importantly as our capital improvements are, so is the ladder truck and so are the roads. So, we know that it's a hard decision, but we thank you for considering just what we have. Okay, so I'll just say next each time. All right, thank you. So today, we are just going to talk very quickly about the priorities of our capital improvement. Mr. Velardi is going to go into the specifics of the each project, and then we'll do a little overview on the state reimbursements on specifically roofing projects. Next. This conversation started quite a while back. In 2018, there were just some initial seed conversations around having a capital reserve fund for monies that the Board of Education could put to the side so that they could have larger projects like these each year. In 2019, there was an initial request for funding of just over $10 million. In 2020-21, that number grew. As you know, each year inflation starts to take place and things with materials, so it grew to a little over 11 million. In '21 to 2022, that also grew once again to 12 million. So each year, we were kind of putting off these capital improvement projects. Each of the projects would also age and sometimes worsen, and then, in addition, time would lapse and inflation would head on. For projecting for FY '23, at that point, we were two years after COVID. Mr. Velardi started with us, and he reassessed all of our priorities. And with that, certain priorities that were top of the list started to move down because other ones became more dire, and they came up to the top. At that point, other projects that weren't on the original list in 2018 and 19 then made it to the list, bringing the total ask up to a little over $16 million. We are again thankful to the Town Council and to the Town Manager, who has always listened to our needs, but we did come to an understanding that 16 million was too much, so we tried to bring it down, and Mr. Velardi went ahead and reduced that to a number of just over $12 million. Next. We were able to reach that $12 million with the elimination of a complete project, and that project would be the Swift Middle School Roof. The reason we chose to eliminate that particular project was because we wouldn't have received as high of reimbursement from the state if we had engaged with that project at this time, so we said that we could kind of wait on that for a couple more years. So state reimbursements are specific to roofing projects and sometimes to turf and fields when there are brand-new school construction projects. We don't have any brand-new school construction projects, so our turfs and tracks don't apply for the reimbursement. However, our roofs do. So you are going to hear a little bit about John Trumbull and Watertown High School's roof, and we, as a district, will range anywhere from as low as 45% upwards to 61% of a reimbursement rate from the Department of Administrative Services from the state. So that means if we were to be bonded for $11 million, or let's say even potentially closer to $12.9 million, we would ultimately get over $4 million back from the state in reimbursements for those roofing projects, which in the end would bring our ask down to something a little more around the $6.08 million number, or a little bit higher than that after the reimbursements are taken into consideration. Next. So this is just kind of going over again about why the increase in dollars. Some may be wondering why is there such a high increase. A very real example is just in '21-22, the square footage cost of replacing a roof typically would be around the $25 to $30 mark a square foot. Right now, we are running at about $50 a square foot to replace that roofing. So, right now, when DAS receives applications from districts with numbers that are not necessarily realistic, they are just ultimately not approving them and not moving them forward. So Mr. Velardi was very careful to work with all of our, I guess, our bidders to give us, yeah, our contractors, to give us the best possible quote and the most realistic one, too. Thank you, and next. All right, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Velardi now.
So as you can see here, it's the Watertown High School roof. Here's an example of just four areas, but there's multiple, multiple areas at Watertown High School. Roof drains leaking, other areas where the roof is just separating from the vents and the side, on the walls of, on top of the roof where they butt up against the other parts of the building. And on that last picture there, you could see where the, between those two pipes and the water's coming down. I had to have one of those pipes replaced because of the water basically was eroding for the pipe, so I had to have, it's a sprinkler pipe, so we had to have that pipe replaced.
Mr. Velardi and his team also has patched the roof many, many times, and at this point, I think, are we able to patch anymore?
No, no. The patching is, basically, we patched anywhere that I saw there was a roof drain and it would sink at that area. So we patched, we did all the patching that we could in those areas. Actually, that first picture, right there, that, I fixed that since then, and that's not leaking at this time. But all along the main hallway where the gym, water's coming in, coming in through flashing, and as you know, the roof is the main defense on our facilities, and it protects everything that's inside of it. So we're hoping that we get this bonding so that we can protect everything that's in our buildings. The high school's a beautiful school, and we want to keep it that way.
You got it. And this project would be eligible for reimbursement. All right, next. Thank you. So this one here, Mr. Velardi will talk about two pieces, the track and then also the turf.
So this is the high school track we'll start first. As you can see, the rubber membrane that's on top of the asphalt in numerous places around the athletic field is coming up, and the cracks indicate that the asphalt is actually moving, and the asphalt needs to be replaced on the track. And that is also in the replacement of the track, so we have to have it milled like a road, repaved, and then recoded around the football field. The astral turf, you can see the numbers coming up. We glued down some of those numbers temporarily, and you can see like that little spot where the yellow line, where the material is completely gone from the field. So we had, I had a company come in to give us an assessment on the GMAX, which is a rating that they rate the compression of the field, you know, as the kids' impact hit on it, or athletes hit on it. And we were a little bit over the recommended level, and they got us down to the recommended level. But this year, at the high school anyways, two or three weeks ago, I had to have them come back because there was a certain area that wasn't recommended. The GMAX level was way too high, and what we did was I had them cut out a piece of the turf on a non-athletic field part, and you replace it with the other stuff. What happens is the turf, the sun, and the constant use of our fields, we're unlike any other high school where there's multiple fields on the field. This is our field hockey field, this is our soccer field, our lacrosse field, our track field, and 90% of those teams also practice on these fields. So just that we got there by this long, I believe it's 13 years for the high school field is, we got our, you know, our money worth out of it.
And I do want to just reassure everybody that it is still safe to be on the field at this point, but we have, for the last few years, been pushing those thresholds, and we do need to replace it at this point. This is not a reimbursable project. It's also a project that we are one year out on at the earliest to start. Because of the nature of track and turf, we can't do it in the winter, we have to wait for a spring thaw, so even if the bonding goes through in November and supply is, let's say, available, we wouldn't be able to start until as early as next spring. So we're holding on as best we can, and I thank Mr. Velardi's expertise just in the sports of it all, because he knows where the GMAX is the worst and where he can assess that. All right, next. So very similarly, Swift.
So this is the Swift field, and you can see this part of the field was the baseball part of the field, and it's in really bad condition. We couldn't do anything to revive this part of the field, so I was forced to close down at least a quarter, a little bit more than a quarter of the field. And I opened up the other, because the other half part of the field is still under the recommended GMAX levels, and we had to have some repaired, just done about two or three weeks ago, first baseline on the softball field, and then around the horn needed to be glued down. But it's, both fields are at their limit, and any time may or may not be closed at this time.
Okay, and then next. Thank you. So at this point, if we are at the $11 million mark, we would be stopping just after this sloped shingle section. If we are able to go a little bit further into the $12.9 million mark, then we can talk about one more project. This is the John Trumbull Primary School Low Slope. You can see that there's internal leakage, but Mr. Velardi will explain what the slope roof is.
So John Trumbull, majority of the roof there is a pitched roof, shingle roof, and this part of the roof is the flat part of the roof, over the, partially over the calf and in the main hallway where the calf is. So like any flat roof in all of our schools, the water and the, and the elements of the weather really wears it down, and that part of that slope was, 2019 it began, and we're at this state now in 2022. So if you can see in some of the pictures, those are just a few pictures. We have some IT rooms that we have tarps on to...
Redirect the water?
Redirect, redirect wa, it's not funny, redirect water, like to get it in a bucket, so it's...
Like a marble maze.
But we're working through it.
And I believe you plan on not using a shingle roof this time, but instead a metal roof?
So, recommended, the pitched part of the roof, we plan on doing metal. So the shingle roof, and I don't know if many of you know the history of it, when it first rolled on, we had probably eight years, the venting lation system in the roof was not correct, and the roof's burning up. It's burning up, you know, right now as we speak. If you look at the roof, my guys going, alls they're doing is they're picking up shingles before they, they go on. So I looked into a metal roofing, and as the report that I gave you before, it's a little bit more cost, but it's a 30-to-life, maybe, warranty on it. You know, life expectancy on the roof.
And we also have partial reimbursement for this project as well.
I believe we're at, I believe at April 3rd, we're at full reimbursement for that, for that roof.
Actually, that's a great thing. So timeline-wise, we wouldn't start all at once in one shot, because we have to have the schools functioning at the same time, so we would time out exactly how the projects move forward so that we can make sure that school's still in session. So again, if we're at the $11 million mark, we're stopping at this point at our projects, but we'll go to the next slide here. The next one here is continuing, actually continuation of the roof, because that's the H fact that Mr. Velardi was talking about. And then we'll go to the next one. Here, this is the project that was eliminated. We can wait a little bit longer on this one. Mr. Velardi and his team was able to patch it for a little bit longer at the Swift, so we'll go to the next one. The following project, this is one that was not on the original list in 2019, but our security cameras became a fairly dire situation this year, and so Mr. Velardi did put that on as one of our priorities as well. And if we can go to the next one. So this is one project, if we do make it to the $12 million mark here, that I think Mr. Velardi would like to move forward with at John Trumbull. You could talk about the flooring.
Right, so these are the floors, as you can see, this is the yellow pod, which is the lower level of John Trumbull, and basically, most of our tiles down in the last four rooms down in the kindergarten are held together by the wax that, that is holding them together on the tiles. The tiles are coming up, you know, weekly in that area. As you can see, one of the four years, all the tiles where the little tricycle has, has come up, and that's just an example of two classrooms, but there's new, just 12, 13 classrooms just in that area that are, are coming up.
And I think the reason they're coming up is when the school was built, there's some settling that happens as well, and so the lower level...
Right, so along with this project and that, and that pod, not only will we have to replace the tiles, but we're going to have to do something with the flooring, which is they're going to coat it and seal it for the moisture. The floor in that area sunk two or three inches, the floor in that school. So when it sunk then, it kind of like off-balanced everything, and there's cracks that need to be patched, so that when we put the new stuff down, it doesn't separate, and we're back in the same problem.
Thank you, next. Okay, and then these two are also part of, not, would not be part of the 11 million, but ultimately, looking at our boiler replacements, they can be very expensive, and so we're on a routine, and this is where we would add those in as well. So if you could go to the next slide. So again, the state reimbursement specifically for the roofs, we would range, I know it says 55, but just to be on a very conservative side, we can range anywhere from 45 to 61%. Turfs and fields are not eligible for reimbursement. Next. And we can go next one more. Thank you. And ultimately, the DAS for the roof projects is looking for a full bonding of the project before we move forward, and then we'll go next. And so the timeline, ultimately, as I mentioned, we're about a year out on all of these if the bonding goes through on November. So the sooner we're able to move forward with it, then we can at least get our application in. It takes a couple months for that to be approved, and then a couple more months for them to do the reassessment and adjustment, and then a couple more months to actually get the project started. Thank you, and next. Okay, so the total ask, Mr. Velardi, would be?
$12,860,000 approximately.
Correct. All right. And I think that's the last one, but if you could just double-check. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the bonding package for the schools? Do we have an extra microphone?
Who is, is this working?
Speak up loud.
Elizabeth Law, 81 Wallace Street.
Come up there, yeah.
Take my spot.
I'd say there might be questions for you guys, so Luigi. We have more questions for you guys, so you get to stick around.
Elizabeth Law, 81 Wallace Street. Here as a parent of children in three out of the five schools here tonight, I have children that participate in fall, spring, and track and field sports, and I coach, and we're also lucky enough to be able to use some of the Watertown Public Schools facilities as well, so we have a lot of exposure to what was presented here tonight, and also exposure to, you know, matches and things where we do hear comments from other towns that are participating here about the condition of some of the facilities that they're in right now. And we also see the benefits of this, you know, a lot that happens on the fields and that we're able to do for both our students and then activities outside of Watertown Public Schools that are able to use these facilities as well, where many of our students in town. And we owe our children, you know, the safe facilities. Our schools are, you know, one of our best investments in town, and our returns on investment in town, and I would hope that we can move forward with the full $12.8 million. I think of it as a failed bathroom project at my own house. I thought it was okay to kind of put a towel by a leak and then put some caulk, and then I ended up with water through my ceiling on my couch in a hole. So I'm hoping that within our school system, we're not ending up with water pouring down through the roof, down to our couch, because we're not fully investing in things now. This just has much bigger impact, you know, than safety. Really, our community benefits so much from what was presented here tonight, so I would appreciate the consideration of the full $12.8 million moving forward.
Thank you. Seeing none at the moment. Any questions or comments from the Town Council? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that a few months back, Dr. Villanueva and Luigi had given me a tour of the projects that we were looking at, and I have to say, I'd like to comment on the staff that have taken care of the schools. They really did an extraordinary job of keeping our schools in the condition they are, and as Mr. Velardo talked about, is they actually have tarps over their computer equipment to divert the water into buckets, and I looked in there, and I'm saying to myself, why would we ask staff members to do that? I'm fully supportive of moving forward, and I do think at this point, after reviewing all the documents and viewing the damage, that we should consider bumping up the bonding to accommodate the ask of the 12.8 that the school is asking for. I think when we looked at the bonding project in general, we didn't give a lot of consideration about the rebate from the state, which will allow us to pay back this bonding more quickly as we receive that money. So I think it would be a good investment for us. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I support, obviously, the monies that you need to make the improvements that you're requesting, but I have a concern. I was on the Board of Ed when those fields were put in, and I objected to them and voted against them at the time, because the board was not putting in the annual amount of money needed to maintain them. And the manufacturer that came and did the presentation told us what it would take annually, and the board never put that money there. So my concern now is, once this is approved and once those fields are updated, we need to have reassurance from the board that you are going to maintain them, and that, at that time, it was like $50,000 a year. I don't know what it would be now, but even that amount of money would go a long way towards making sure that they lasted, or that their life expectancy was longer, and that they were taken care of. So that would be something I think that we would all be concerned about, that they be maintained once they're done. Thank you.
So the short time that I've been here, I can't speak for anyone that was before me, I already set up plans with Replay Sports and other turf management companies, and we've already had them come in four times to maintain and work with me on how to properly maintain some of the areas. We got, one of my guys every morning goes out after there's an event, and there are the little rubber things, they're called giblets, when they're, especially now, because we're right at that threshold, we are raking in more giblets in there. And if you, the report that I gave you before, the, I also put in a machine that we can maintain it on ourselves, on the in-between of having this company, Replay Sports, come in and do their four-year service. It has come down a lot since the 50 grand, because of so much in the technology in the turf itself. It's not close to $50,000, although it may, if you count my manpower hours in there. Some people may think that it's a maintenance-free field. It's not. It's minimal maintenance, but there is maintenance in it, and as long as I'm here, I will make sure that we are maintaining that field.
Right. And it sounds like you've set that goal already, and are performing, and that's great. The other thing you might want to consider is making sure that benches and chairs aren't put on those fields like we've seen done recently. That's caused more damage.
Right.
People have to understand that if we're investing this kind of money, that they have to buy into it, too, to maintain it.
Anyone else?
I have a couple.
Rob?
Doctor, contingency money built into this, so just in case, so we're not coming back and asking for more afterwards?
Yep, absolutely. So we had originally, back in 2019, had a 10% contingency. When Mr. Velardi went out to get our reassessed quotes in 2021, 2022, 22, 23, they told us to put in a 20% contingency because of supply. When we brought the number back down to 11 million, we brought it back down to a 10% contingency, but again, with our phased-in approach, we may be able to just time and stop certain things if we don't get to, you know, a point where we want, because we don't want to be three-quarters of the way into a project and then run out, exactly as you just said. I also don't think we'll be approved by DAS if we don't have enough of contingency padded in anyhow, and we'd probably be rejected, so...
Right. During this process, because a lot of it was new to me, so I communicated with the state, and he basically told me, you have to make sure that you have, that's where we have the $50 dollar amount, and he helped me set the contingency levels of each roofing project, our turf project. There is a small contingency in there, we put 10%, but it's just a layover. It's like taking your rug out of your house and then laying another rug down.
Right.
You know, the most that might happen is some grating and maybe a drain that was faulty that they have to replace.
I have one more. So out of the 12.8 million request on this, what is the return from the state?
So on the two roofing projects for John Trumbull and Watertown High School, I'll give you the exact number. We would probably get just about a little over $4.4 million on the low end of things. That's at a conservative 45% to 50% reimbursement rate. Mr. Velardi just shared that if we do the John Trumbull roof in April and start it then, then we would get a full 61% back. And if that's the case, then it's a little bit more than that. Either way, anywhere for each of those projects, between 45 and 61%.
Great. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Gary? I had a couple of questions. Like at the high school, where you showed the pipes in the ceiling, you said the pipes are starting to rust away and all that. Is there, are they under pressure, those pipes at all?
Well, the one that you saw was a sprinkler pipe that was, and you wasn't sure if it was so much of the leak that was oxidating on there, or it was put there like that, but it was failing, so we had to replace it.
Yeah, so I didn't know if they can, if you can, like, put PVC in there, or, you know...
No, no.
All right, and on the, on the turf fields, I know at the high school, they've always had problems with that field there, and it's mostly ledge underneath there at the football.
Right.
And I just wonder if they put a better base down, you won't have that flexibility going up and down on the fields, and, you know, for that part. And then the last one was, I think, I don't know how much of a project it would cost, but like, with all these tiles popping up at the John Trumbull School, like you're seeing, I don't know if you saw like the flooring that they have at the firehouse, it's like that, it was like painted on with a sand grid on it.
Epoxy, probably.
And I don't, you know, I think that's a much better way to go than this here.
That's an epoxy, and I have thought about it, and asked the guy for quotes in our four-year sections. You saw where all the rug and the tile was gone, and like that little four-year section due to epoxy there, and also the vinyl, big ones of vinyl, that seems to hold up in the schools better than the T3, I forgot what they call the little square tiles that break down. The cost is higher, you know, so we see with the funding that we have, when you, when you put that in, but I think in the long run, the maintenance on them, and if we maintain them, then it would be beneficiary.
But at this point, we've quoted out for the tile.
Tile.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, so that's it.
Anyone else?
Question for Dr. V. Just to be clear on numbers, so $12,860 is the number that we're looking for, and that number minus the $4,400 and approximately 11, really, the number's just under eight and a half. We know how the state changes their mind on occasion. Is that 4.4 million something that is an automatic or a guarantee? I don't like you... I don't like using that word, but.
You can certainly, yeah.
Is there a chance that we don't get the 4 million?
Well, just today, because of this meeting, I called up the state again and they're going to reset the reimbursement rates. And usually it's done in September and they're a little behind right now in '18. But he assured me that it would only go 1 or 2 percent higher. So it may go to 63 percent or 1 or 2 percent lower. So if that helps you at all.
So I wouldn't take that 4.410 as a hard and fast number. It can fluctuate up and down a little bit. We're going to hope for that it goes upwards. But we will do, one of the big reasons why school districts don't get their reimbursement back is because the project management of it. I don't want to, the project management of it is very important. So when they ask for invoices and receipts and they look for the timeline and that we've put in eligible items, then we're reimbursed. It's when ineligible items are put in and they're just slid in that we don't get the reimbursement and then that number goes down. So before anything goes in, we would appoint a project manager specific to these roofing projects so that we maximize on the reimbursement. Another part of this is we want to do this in a very timely fashion. The other reason why school districts don't get their full reimbursements back is because they hold on to their projects and keep them open for 10, 11, 12 years and they never close them out. We'd like to go in precisely, get it done in a year, close it out in two to three, and get the reimbursement back.
Sure. Thanks for the explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So my, I have a few brief, brief questions. One is, and I think you've answered and you did answer largely in this, these materials, but when do we get that re, I guess the first question is, when do we get that reimbursement? It's in, within the same fiscal year that the project is completed?
It's not, no. So it will happen when the project closes and so I'll air quote it because the state tells us when the project closes. So ultimately, they'll have a plan of what it will take to finish it out. All of the work needs to be completed. And then the state comes and does an inspection and then tells us through an audit that it's officially been closed and then we sign off on the closure. So until that's done, it still remains open and then the reimbursement doesn't come until after that.
Do we know approximately how long that takes?
So if the project takes this year, I'm just giving some grace, two to three years, I would say, to wait for the reimbursement. I have to say, though, in history, we have had some projects that have remained open for over 10 years. So again, the project management of it's going to be very important on our end. And I think we should make a plan to have regular updates so that it's always on everybody's radar, that we are looking to get it closed as soon as possible.
And is the?
So if I could add to that by doing my research. So John Trumbull began in 1999 and it was closed out in 2003. But that's a full school project. That was a new school from beginning to end. So roofing projects may be, instead of three or four years, one or two years, it may be able to close out. As long as that everything on that roof is done up to spec and we're closing out and we're happy with it.
Yeah, and just going off of what Ken was asking, I know we can't get a guarantee, but do we get any written, you know, commitment or something from the state indicating that they will, you know, that we've been locked in? And at what point does that happen? Does it happen when the project's submitted and accepted? Or when 10 years go by and we actually complete the project?
Yep, absolutely. So if you wouldn't mind bringing the presentation up and going back to the third last slide. So what would happen is right now, we're at the cost estimate stage and you'll see it on the screen in just a moment. The cost estimates come in from our architects. Go for one more. Actually, we'll go the other way, sorry. Yep, there we go. So we're at step one, which is the cost estimate stage. Then, once bonding is definitely secured, we go in and put in our official application to the state for approval. At that point, in a month or two, they give us a grant commitment letter. And in that grant commitment letter, it tells us exactly what the specs of the project are. But then two weeks later, the state sends out their own architect to reassess our original cost estimates and they probably tweak things. I've never seen a district not have tweaks to their original cost estimates. Then they give us exactly what you're talking about, Mr. DeBono, which is a full plan review. And that's a very long plan review document with, those are those big books in your office, Luigi. They're like this thick. And then after that, once that plan review is done and we get that document, we get the approval letter. Once that is done, then we go out for one more bid just to get a concrete we're in with the lowest price or the best price for our project. And then there we go. So the eligible, ineligible's are all in that document and it's a very thick book. So you do have it in writing.
And that's in the approval letter that they will reimburse the specific amount?
Exactly, of what's reimbursable and what's not reimbursable.
The eligible expenses, I understand. And then, and I'll ask this briefly. Who gets that? The Board of Ed, the town, the?
Yep, our reimbursements come straight to the town and I believe they're put towards the debt service account.
Okay, I'll ask a question that everyone's going to throw tomatoes at me. And that is, do we need to do a turf? Could we do grass on those fields?
We could do grass on those fields, but it would, the cost would be double the amount of just laying the turf back down. And to maintain that, like I said, most of our fields, that's our soccer field, it's our field hockey field, it's our lacrosse field. The track team plays on it and our football team plays on it every Friday night. As long, as well as practicing, practicing there. It's basically our only field that we have on our high school campus. I mean, I know the soccer team goes to John Trumbull on an occasion and they do a really good job of Mr. Cattuccio rotating who's on that field and who's off that field. But from 2:05 to 8 o'clock and sometimes later, that field's being used. So if we were to put grass on it, the manpower to keep the grass, I think that's why we're in the situation that we got the field turf was because of the safety of the field and the grass. Because I was a coach at that time and the field was, the grass field was pretty bad. But in that, I'm going to say is, I like the grass field.
I'll ask one more, I'm sorry, one more and I'm done. And that is, and I think I know the answer to this, but if we only bond for 11 million, do we still fall within the state reimbursement, you know, the criteria that they'll reimburse for eligible projects? And I think the answer is yes, but I just wanted to hear your thought on that.
Right, the answer is yes. We would get a little bit more reimbursement with the 12.8 because the slow-slope group at John Trumbull right now is with the 11 million, we're $459,000 short of doing a total re-roof of it. And then we're just doing a main, like what they did to the high school when they redid it. They.
Like refurbished.
They refurbished it. So that is not eligible for reimbursement.
Thank you.
Through the chair again. A question from Mr. Velardi. Luigi, you said you contacted the state and you were made aware, as it says here, state statute allows for maximum reimbursement on a roof or is it on roofs every 20 years? Is that the lifespan of the roof? For example, you were correct about Trumbull. That was built in '99.
Right.
And then on. However, the high school was rebuilt back in '08 and '09. We're not talking 20 years. Would this still fall into play or would we have to wait till the high school reached the duration of its initial roof 20 years?
This is how it works for reimbursement. You get 20 years. Any years before that is 5 percent less. So you start off at 20 years at 60, 61 percent. And then see at the year 19, we needed it. Then it's 55. Year 18, it's 50. So right now, the high school is at 50 percent and is going to be in 55 percent because of when they did the school in 2008. Alls they did was a maintenance to it. They did a layover, I believe. Like they, the total construction of the roof wasn't ripped off. It was just coated with like an epoxy sort of material that they use.
So the way I also understand it is that when they did the new portion of the high school, they redid that portion of the roof. This portion of the roof, I believe, is the old section, which is greater than 20 years old.
Right.
And that's why it's in such shape.
You both answered my question very well. And another question I have. It's about the fields. Everybody's aware that the fields have problems. We're talking about liability to the Board of Ed, the town itself, risk of injury to our players and importantly also, visiting teams' players. And we're making statements here that are accurate, obviously, that the fields are in deplorable condition. I can recall this happening, as does my fellow councilman, Ritalik, going back 25 years, that the fields, Luigi would remember this also. Field hockey players were getting hurt. They were getting almost blinded by stones into their eyes and so forth and work was done then. I'm saying the safety and protection of our athletes and visiting athletes, team members is very important.
Absolutely. And if I could jump in here and you can as well. So we, actually, when Mr. Velardi started, I said to him, tell me if we need to close the field. I know everybody will hate me for it, but if we need to close it, we're closing this field because we never want to see any athlete get hurt.
Exactly.
We are always looking at the Gmax levels. And as Mr. Velardi said, he's had three visits already to the Watertown High School field this year just to keep it up in sections. We did have to close that section at Swift. We assessed it and we said, no matter what we did to this, it broke our hearts that we had to close it. And once I close something, and I say I close something as a superintendent, I make that decision, I'm not reopening it until we're fully fixing it. So at this point, I want our parents to feel reassured as well as our visiting teams that we are not having our kids play on an unsafe field. I will stress that we are getting towards the latter and max, maximum capabilities of it and that needs to be addressed now before it gets into that position. But it is still a safe pitch to play on. And again, the place that is not safe is already closed off and nobody is allowed to be on that portion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Let's have a couple of brief comments. Going back to the question, would it be cheaper or better to have real grass? Real grass is nice until it's not nice. Back when I was in high school in Watertown, we had the track and field at the high school completely closed for a year for the grass to grow. It looked perfect after that year. A year of going to Taft and other places to practice because we couldn't practice there. Within a month, it was completely destroyed. And hence why we ended up with turf fields there. So after a year of investment, all the money investing in it, truly almost overnight, it was completely destroyed. Doesn't take one or two nice rainstorms and people playing afterwards and it's just, it's ripped up pretty bad. Another question or comment I have is specific with the Swift field. If I recall, you got soccer, you have a couple of baseball, softball fields. Is the layout of that going to be similar when it's redone? Or is there going to be any changes as far as what's included?
I looked into a different layout for that field. And if you walk the field, you'll notice that there's a concrete membrane that runs down, the turf butts up to the grass. And the cost to take that out and extend the turf to the fence like what it should, the way it should be, is, was too, too much to bring forth, I thought.
Another thing, Sue, can you just elaborate on, once the grant funds are received, just how they're treated and how that benefits the town kind of years to come?
About the reimbursement?
Yes.
Right, so when the reimbursement, as Dr. V said, it comes back to the town. It will be put into our debt service fund and that's the fund that will be used to pay down the bonds payments.
So a good illustration is we have a total package of 17.5 in bonds, then almost like a parallel investment account that whatever the gains are, that's where part of the principal interest we paid out of that versus coming out of the budget.
Correct. It's part of the annual budget too, it's always in there. That shows how much money we have in debt service that we'll be spending, you know, per year.
Yep.
So yes.
And my last comment is, I've heard comments about how the town spends a lot of money on the schools. If it's the annual budget, if it's capital improvements, roofs, fields, there's always a need and always a want and always a more money involved that follows all that. And I just want to make a comment on specifically dealing with the fields. Yes, it's our students, it's our kids, there's a lot of safety issues that we need to resolve. But it truly is for the community as a whole. There's other groups outside of the school systems that use those fields and get enjoyment from those fields and get beat up by those fields because they need to be improved. But like I said, I, back in high school, I used it. Even now, I still use the turf fields in town and I think it's a great investment for the town. Any other comments? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.